I call this meeting of the Alexander County Board of Commissioners to order. It is August 1st, 2016 at 6:00 PM. Tonight Commissioner Larry Yoder will lead us in the invocation and Commissioner Josh Lael will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. If you would, please rise.
Let us pray. Our kind and most gracious heavenly Father, as we gather here tonight to conduct the county's business, we ask that you be with us to help us in our decisions that we make. We ask that you be with our state and local governments in the decisions they're making. Lord, we also ask that you be with our law enforcement personnel as they're represented here tonight, as they go about their daily duties, as they do those things that a lot of us really appreciate them running to and us coming back and staying out of the limelight of the things that take place in a law enforcement officer's day. As they leave home each morning, we ask that your blessings be with them, be with their families, and at each time they have to make the decision to do the things that they need to do. Be with them, lead them, guide them, bless them, because all those things they do, they do to protect us, to look after us, and to give us a safer community, safer highways, and safer places for us to go and come, and to be with our families. Lord, we ask you to bless their families as each one of them leaves home each morning and their loved ones never know if they're going to return. They do this job with the honor and respect of the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of North Carolina, to uphold those laws, to give us a place that we can, as I say, go about and travel freely, knowing that we are in safe hands. I'd ask you be with all of our local law enforcement personnel, both the county, the city, and the State Highway Patrol and other agencies that serve this county. Please be with our military personnel, both home and abroad. Look after them that they could come back home and be with their families. Lord, it's this time that our law enforcement's going through a bad time of people misjudging them, not knowing the situations they'd go through. We ask that in this state and in this nation, that people have something to say, do it a calm and cool manner, that they can do it and talk about things and come to issues, and to make a good settlement about things that happen. Be with them, bless them, take care of them, and Lord, make sure that when they take that tour of duty, that they arrive back home with their loved ones. For we ask all thy things in thy name, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight we have a special recognition, and I'll say this is probably the safest we've ever been in this meeting room before. So, we appreciate you guys being here. I'm going to invite Sheriff Bowman to come up, and if all you guys want to come around here, we'd love to have all of you come up to the front there.
I'm not getting hurt by myself. Of course, I didn't bring my gun tonight.
A little humor.
Sheriff Bowman, if you would, just tell who all you've got with you and a little bit about what they do.
Well, I have from my office, my deputies, detention officers, and I see that Dennis James Police Chief has his department here, Highway Patrol back here in the back also. Am I seeing probation anywhere? I don't believe probation could make it, but like Larry was saying in the prayer that he was saying, the morale is down, down, all across the nation of law enforcement. The worst that I've seen, and I've been here for 36, 37 years in law enforcement, times are changing, and they're changing, I don't think, for the better. But I'm telling you, here in Alexander County, it's making us feel good that we have commissioners, citizens standing behind us and thanking us. We've had more pats on the back, so to speak, in the last probably three weeks than ever. And I've got to mention this, we've had parents with their children come by our office bringing thank you cards, doughnuts, like if we need doughnuts, but they were appreciated, which really, really made us feel good, and we're proud of that, that parents are trying to direct the young children in the right direction as far as of authority and giving respect, not only to law enforcement, but their neighbors too. And like I said, that makes us feel good. One of the churches here in the county called me, and they're wanting to come down and do ice cream, I think Thursday evening at 5:00, for all the officers, Highway Patrol, everybody you see here. And we had a company out of Hickory that came to me last week, and they're wanting to bring in a meal for all the officers, Highway Patrol, all the emergency personnel for catering meals in for that, just to show their appreciation. And again, I just want to say thank you to the Alexander County citizens that I know that are standing behind us, law enforcement officers, trying to do what we took oath to do, and do it in a way that the job gets done. And I'm going to let Dennis James have a couple words.
Thank you, Sheriff. I've probably eaten more doughnuts in the last three weeks than I've eaten my entire life.
That's true, but that just goes to show you how the people in Taylorsville, Alexander County, support us, and I thank you for this.
I'll introduce a couple, my officer, Officer Gordon Knight, Officer Zach Stevenson, Stephen Hope. I miss anybody. But one thing we have here, a lot of agencies, myself and the sheriff, we have a good working relationship. Highway Patrol, a lot of counties keep saying that. And also, you know, we just appreciate the support, because it's, I've been doing this 25 years, and Sheriff's been doing it a lot longer, but seriously, though, if you've never have you seen it, you know, this way.
Never this bad.
And, but we're fortunate to live here where, you know, people do care. We've got cards at the PD, just phone calls, it's been wonderful, and I thank you for doing this.
Well, we want you to know, all you guys know, that, you know, we support you wholeheartedly. You got a tough job, you got to make tough decisions, and the community supports you, we support you, and we appreciate the job you do. We know it's a tough one. And not just, you know, the guys that are out there on the street, too. You've got people that are in detention, like Mr. Harrison and you Highway Patrol guys. I'd love, want one of you guys to come up here and just say a few words.
I didn't mention that to them.
We appreciate the job you do, and I wish somebody from probation and parole could have been here, but we understand they've got other duties too, so.
I'd like to invite my chief deputy up to say a few words.
Well, just want to say thank you. It's reassuring and a blessing, I know in my heart, and all these officers that you thought enough of us to invite us out here. I've been doing it about 27 years, and like Sheriff said, I've never seen it like this before, but Alexander County is unique, always has been, and I'm very thankful that I was born and raised here, and the good Lord's blessed me to work here my whole life, so thank y'all very much, it's very much appreciated.
Sheriff, could you just say just a few words about the National Night Out?
Yes, thank you for reminding me. Our fourth annual National Night Out will be tomorrow evening at the Alexander County Fairgrounds, beginning at 5:00 and running to about 9:00. We will be on B-86 in the morning, giving a little more information also, but there's going to be a couple bands there. One of them's called 1018. I think they told me to, yeah, ain't that something, Larry?
Oh, I can't even, I'm sorry.
But I found out one of my detectives is a lead singer, and I haven't heard him sing yet, so this is going to be a treat, and invite everybody else to come out to give your opinion. And the other band was Shakedown, I believe, which is well-known here in the county, and there's going to be a lot of vendors there, some more of the county, I think DSA's, several of them, Health Department, several of them is going to be there, literature, handing out things also. Last year, we had approximately, I think, 2,000 people that showed up, so we've got 2,000 hot dogs ordered again this year, and if the weather permits, I think we'll go above the 2,000 again this year. And it's set up across the nation for citizens, the children, the parents bring their children out to meet law enforcement, just to mingle with them, and if they have a problem, of course, we talk about it there, but the main thing is, is just getting to mingle with your local law enforcement so that we can always keep or try to keep good with the citizens. Thank you very much.
And, yeah, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, that's important, you know, to teach the kids, you remember we had that incident where somebody broke into my vehicle, and we had a couple sheriff's deputies had came to the house, and, you know, my daughter was four or five at the time, she was probably five at the time, but, so she saw the police there that morning, and she's, Daddy, are you going to jail? And, no.
See, that's one thing in the past, and I was brought up the same way, says, if you don't, there's a cop if you don't be good, there's a cop, they're going to get you. And, you know, we try to get away from that, because everybody in this room knows that, you know, the authority is there, not only, like I said, do a job, but get to trust and get this generation that's coming up so if we can get it changed. And I, again, want to thank Rick, all of you, for asking us to come out and showing your appreciation, that makes us feel good too.
And I'll mention, the county commissioners are going to be competing against the Sheriff's Department.
I wouldn't know what to imagine, just to y'all did.
August, I believe it's August the 16th at the Pollard Raceway, so it's for charity, and are you racing, Sheriff?
Yes, I think I have to now.
Yeah.
I can't back out, but, but me and Larry was talking earlier, back when we did the lawnmower racing, we both said never again.
We had a good time, though, didn't we? Saw a lot of people there that night, didn't we?
They seen me go airborne, I know that, on the lawnmower. But, yeah, it's for a good cause, and I think it'll be a lot of fun, all of us get out there, and, but if I'm behind, don't make fun, because I ain't going to try to get in front. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to say a couple things, if I may. I just want to tell you guys that I really appreciate having walked in your steps, and I did, I walked, I started in '73 when I was on the Highway Patrol. We had a ration of law enforcement officers get killed then. My PT instructor, Pete Peterson, was shot and killed. Friend of mine, Deputy Sheriff from Lincoln County, was shot and killed, and it stays on your mind, and, you know, you got to pay real close attention out there and look after yourself, because there's only one person there at the time, because none of you, to the best of my knowledge, ride a team. And, you know, take care of yourself, pay attention, watch your surroundings, and know that there are people out there that if something happens and they come by, something's going on, there are people that will stop and they will help you, and be rest assured of that, especially in this county, I know they will. And then I'm only going to tell one thing here about families, something happened, I guess. Sound like it's not talking. But anyway, I will tell one funny thing that I saw on Facebook, one of the law enforcement officers that works for you, Chris, at the Sheriff's Department, was at the beach, and it was really neat to watch him trying to get up on the surfboard, and I think his daughter got up way before he did. And that's some of the things that these guys do, folks, the ladies and women that wear the uniform, they have families too. They want to go to the beach with them, they want to go enjoy with them, and we need to be there to support them, take care of them, and look after them, because I do appreciate the job that every one of you do. You do a good job, and law enforcement in this county, I can tell you, since I came here in '73, I can tell you now, the Sheriff's Department, the Highway Patrol, and the Police Department have always had a fantastic working relationship, and you're all to be commended on that, because not many areas can say that, but I know in this county, all of you work real, real close together, and I appreciate all of you doing that. And once again, thank you for the job you do. God bless you.
All right, guys, we appreciate it, and thanks for being here tonight. Commissioner's report, is there anybody who would like to speak on anything? Commissioner Lael?
I have one quick, quick thing. I had the opportunity, and I guess I had the opportunity to attend a meeting here at 4:30, and actually, that meeting was, it was for the students and parents of the first class of the Alexander County Early College. And my daughter is fortunate enough to be a part of that, my oldest daughter is fortunate enough to be part of that inaugural or first class of Alexander, Alexander Early College. And I just wanted to kind of echo, I know it's been talked about some, but I just wanted to echo how cool it is, I mean, how cool this opportunity is for our kids. And obviously, they can't take every child in high school, but I'm going to tell you, it's not designed for every child in high school. There are a lot of kids that wouldn't be interested in it because, for this reason or that. But basically, these 50-plus kids from both east and west middle, rising ninth graders, four years from now will graduate with a high school diploma and a two-year associate's degree. So when they're 18, they will have two years of, so they will have two years of college under their belt. What does that mean for, what does that mean for the child? Well, they will have a two-year leg up on the other kids that are trying to get into that, to get into Chapel Hill, or get into NC State, or get into somewhere else, as well as the parents. For my daughter to get a bachelor's degree, I'm only going to have to pay for two years. And I just, you know, and that's just, it's a great opportunity for these kids, and the group is very diverse, you know, it's, but it's just a, obviously, it's a great opportunity for these 50-some kids. Next, I think their target, target is about 75 kids per class, so next year, they'll be rising ninth graders, you know, that can again apply to be in Alexander County Early College. This has gone on in Catawba County for several years, but it's just something that, you know, the collaboration of Alexander County Schools and CBCC, and I think the Bill Gates Foundation, have been able to put together that's really going to benefit a good number of children in our county.
I just want to say one thing. With the ABC referendum going on, most people on both sides are, you know, great people on both sides of that argument, but some people on the anti-alcohol side are spreading rumors, and I just want to put those rumors to rest. One is that, you know, I'm an alcoholic. Another is that Josh Lael's an alcoholic. A third one is that Milton Campbell is building a restaurant with a bar inside. A fourth one is that Josh Lael's going to plan on building that ABC store in Bethlehem if this referendum passes. So I just want to put those rumors to rest, there is not one ounce of truth to any of that, and that's all we've got to say about it. But, you know, when people are out there spreading vicious rumors like that to try to destroy your reputation, it really upsets me. So normally, you know, there's a lot of things that are said that are not true that, you know, about us, and we just let it go and don't say anything. But this time, it's very personal, and I felt like I just needed to come out and say something about it, because it's disgusting. And people who hear that, or people who started that should be ashamed, and people who pass that on and gossip about that should be ashamed. So that's all I had to say. You've got your agenda before you, is there any additions, deletions, changes?
Move to approve as is.
Second. Okay. Got a motion of second, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. First item on the agenda is public comment. First is Bud Kaywood. He's going to be speaking about exhibiting artists at Bethlehem Library.
Thank you, Chairman Mayberry. My name is Bud Kaywood. Tonight I represent both the Bethlehem Community Development Association and the Bethlehem Friends of the Library, only because both of those organizations sponsor the Bethlehem Branch Library Exhibiting Artist Series. This is, this is a series of exhibitions that was actually started back in, in August of 2010, and we've had, we've been running our exhibitions every two months ever since, and we've showcased the work of more than 100 local and regional artists, and most of our artists have been local, and some of these artists are the finest ones in the southeast, and they're right here in Alexander County. So we're very, very fortunate to have that kind of talent right here, and to make it available to all of our citizens. The reason why I'm up here tonight is that this Thursday, we have a special exhibition, which is the Brushy Mountain Film Users Group, and it's different from the photography exhibitions that we've had in the past. Typically, we do one photography exhibition each year, and this is the one that we're doing this year. And it's, the reason what makes it so special is that all of the photography is done the old-fashioned way, processed in darkrooms, and it's done with film and cameras, so there's no digital photography involved at all with this. So I want to personally invite all of you to come. It starts at 5:30, the opening reception begins at 5:30 and runs until 7:00. There will be some light refreshments there. You'll have an opportunity to meet the photographers, and at 6:00, we have what is called a gallery talk, which allows each, the organizer, since this is a group exhibition, will probably talk for the group. Typically, if it's a single artist or two artists, they each have an opportunity to talk. So we'd love for you to come, we would love for the public to come, and anybody interested in exhibiting at the Bethlehem Branch Library would need to get in touch with me, and the best way to do that is through my email, which is kaywoodstudio@charter.net, and Kaywood is spelled with a C. But I will tell you, the library gallery is, the exhibitions are booked all the way through 2017, and I'm taking only a few left that are available in 2018, so the wait is a long wait. So I appreciate the opportunity, and hopefully, we'll see you guys there on Thursday evening. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I forgot to mention that we are keeping to our normal schedule of three minutes, so if you could, keep your comments to under three. Number two on the agenda is Donna Reed, Bethlehem Day Bake Off.
Hi, I'm Donna Reed. I am one of the co-chairmen for the Bethlehem Day, which is September 17th, that'll be our seventh annual Bethlehem Day, and we're adding a new event this year. It's the Bethlehem Baker Challenge. We're actually going to have two competitions, an individual and a church competition, just to add a little bit of camaraderie there between the churches and the folks there in Bethlehem. The individual competition will have first, second, and third place, which will be a monetary prize for each one of those places, judged by some fine celebrity judges, and the church competition will actually be by popular vote. So, couple of things, I do have entry fees, and you, I do have the entry applications, and you can also print those off at bethlehemcd.org. Now, the entry fee's going to be $10 each, and one thing, there's more details on the application, but two things. We do need the recipes that each person will be submitting for two reasons. One, in case there's any food allergies for those who obviously are going to be tasting the food, and the second reason is, we're going to compile all of these recipes, and at the eighth annual Bethlehem Day in 2017, we will have a recipe book there for sale to benefit the Bethlehem community. So, that's it.
Thank you. Faye Burner, Faye, okay, you're going to be, she's going to be speaking about the ABC referendum and truthful info.
Chairman Mayberry, members of the county commission, valued staff, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Faye Burner, I live in the Bethlehem area, and I attended my first Alexander County Commissioners meeting on July 18th. At that meeting, a member of the public spoke against sending the ABC referendum to the voters in November, and gave the commission what I believe to be some misinformation. I've gone back and listened to his presentation to make sure. He said, quote, "For every dollar, it's offset $21.43 in public services." He didn't cite a source for that information, or say whether it's a dollar in gross beverage alcohol sales, or a dollar of tax revenue coming to Alexander County. I have tried to track down this number. I came up with a 2002 statistic that was issued by the Alcohol and Drug Council of North Carolina, and I called them and spoke with a gentleman named Keith Kimbrough. He told me he has received several calls about that so-called statistic in the last two weeks, including one from a gentleman who said he was a member of the county commission. The truth is, that's, this statistic is not currently issued by the ADC of North Carolina. Whether it was ever an accurate number is not known. It is certainly outdated now. Their former director liked to quote numbers, their current director concentrates on helping to treat substance abuse issues. The speaker at your last meeting also said, quote, "An associate told me it's 5.9 miles from the Taylorsville Savings Bank in Bethlehem to the ABC store in Taylorsville. I clocked it in my 2008 Jeep Wrangler with standard tires. According to my odometer, it is 8.5 miles just from the bank down Rink Dam Road to NC-16. It is another 6.1 miles to the ABC store in Taylorsville, for a total of 14.6 miles by road." Now, it may be that the speaker's associate went by air, but for the rest of us, it is a long drive there and back. I hope that the proponents and the opponents of the referendum will be careful in their speech and literature in the next three months. Everyone is entitled to his or her own opinion, but they are not entitled to make up their own facts.
Okay, thank you, your time's up.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Burner. And I was, the county commissioner, actually called the North Carolina Alcohol and Drug Council to check on that information, and anyway, well, you've said enough about it, we don't have to get into any details. Thank you.
And I think also the speaker retracted that distance in the form of an email, so I think he did recognize that that 5.9 was incorrect and sent an email, so just to be fair on that one, I think that was corrected, so.
All right, thank you. That's all the speakers we had tonight. We're going to move on to item number two on the agenda. We're gonna move on to item number two on the agenda, public hearing, rezoning case 16-4, Tabernacle Baptist Church, John Pilkington, planning and development director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to the board. You have tonight before you a public hearing regarding rezoning case 16-4. It's for property located at 7703 Highway 90 East. The property is owned by Tabernacle Baptist Church. They are requesting that this property be rezoned from its current light industrial zoning district to the highway commercial zoning district. The current land use of the property, it is actually not used for anything. It's vacant, but it was used for, as a propane filling station in the past. The proposed use by Tabernacle Baptist Church is for them to build a new church facility as well as have a church cemetery on the property. The reason that the request is to, is from the light industrial to the highway commercial is that a church and the accompanying cemetery would be actually permitted as a permitted use by right in the highway commercial district. With that being said, noted in the packet is that, as with all rezoning requests that come before, the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as the county commissioners, staff makes a recommendation based on the 2008 comprehensive plan. And I did note that the rezoning is inconsistent with the 2008 comprehensive plan. It identifies the area as designated for industrial use. And as stated in previous cases, with the limited amount of industrial zoning in the county, changing the zoning could have economic impacts. However, rezoning the partial to highway commercial is less of an impact to the property for any future development versus actually changing the zoning to a less intense use such as residential. The property consists of approximately 18 acres. The Planning and Zoning Commission met on July the 14th and unanimously recommended that the rezoning approval, rezoning request be approved based on the fact that while it's not consistent with the 2008 comprehensive plan, that rezoning the property to highway commercial would not be a negative impact to any future development of the property. Staff's recommendation was also the same, that the request be approved and under the same, under the same recommendation, that it wouldn't be a severe negative impact to the development of the property. Does anyone have any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
I make a motion to approve rezoning case 16-4.
We gotta do all of it.
All, okay. The whole thing, okay. Okay, you gotta close, okay.
Do I need to make a motion to open a public hearing?
Before you make that motion, Mr. Chairman, let's see if anybody in the audience has anything to say, please.
Yeah, that's right. Does anybody in the audience want to speak? Okay, come up to the microphone.
Can I address them to you?
We need to address forward.
My name's Larry Riddle. The questions I have in my mind on this property, how long has the church owned that? Anybody know? I mean, or is it owned by the church at this time?
The property is currently owned by Tabernacle Baptist Church. I'm not aware of when they purchased it or...
October 2015, based on the S's.
Okay. They bought it in 15. So in 14, somebody was paying taxes on it, correct? What was the last tax amount? Does anybody happen to know?
Tax value is 203,744.
203,744. The current tax value per the GIS information that we have in front of us is $203,744.
Okay, and what would the taxes been on that? What would they actually have paid, suppose? If you'll give me a minute, I can calculate it. The point I'm getting to, in this county, there's over 116 churches and they own, not counting this, they own 773 acres of land that there's no taxes paid on. And every time something like this happens, the county takes another hit. And that's my point. That's my only point. You need to really think about it and see if there's any way to trade land for land and put it back to paying taxes. In this time of poor revenue, one of these transactions is gonna cost you a lot of money long-term. I don't mean anything by it other than people need to be aware of it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. It's about $1,600. Is there anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak? No? You have a motion?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, you got a motion to second. Is there any more discussion? There being none? All those in favor of closing public hearing, raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Second's mine.
I'll stake the reason why.
I'll take the motion that we accept the recommendation in regarding to the zoning case 16-4 that's recommended, sorry. Recommend that we approve the zoning request because it's consistent with the 2008 comprehensive, or excuse me, this one isn't consistent with comprehensive plan, but it, in regard to rezon the property highway commercial, but it's not a negative impact because of future development of the property. It has been recommended by the staff and as well as the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Now, I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Okay, there being none? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Pilkington. Item number three on the agenda, the public hearing, transfer of property to Alexander Railroad, call on David Eisenhower, the EDC director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This public hearing, as noted, is in reference to the potential transfer of property from Alexander County to Alexander Railroad Company. The property to be considered includes approximately 450 linear feet of rail and also consists of approximately 0.68 acres of land. I believe in your package, you have a photograph that may depict the piece of property that we're talking about. It's located in the Alexander Industrial Park and it serves primarily right now Paragon Films, but also other areas of the park. The fair market value currently for this piece of property is just a little over $2,000 and it could be conveyed pursuant to General Statute 158, 7.1, for the purpose of aiding and encouraging job growth via continued operations and expansions in the Alexander Industrial Park. The consideration that you could get for this transfer would be in the form of, once this is transferred to the railroad, of course, it will generate property taxes at that point, albeit not a lot considering the value of the property and the size of the property. The primary consideration, though, for this piece of property would be that the railroad will accept all future maintenance of the rail line because it will be their property. This piece of rail is, rail line is approximately 10 years old now, so the maintenance costs are about to kick in. The current maintenance needs are estimated at about $10,000 to $12,000 for replacement of railroad ties. And the railroad, of course, is aware of this and is agreeable to take on this cost and to save the county from incurring this cost of maintenance. So, of course, the rail, the railroad intends to continue to use the property to serve the current manufacturers and concern, to serve future manufacturers in the industrial park. So for those reasons, it would be my recommendation to the board that you approve the transfer of this property to Alexander Railroad. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, I got several. Why does the property need to be transferred instead of just providing an easement?
Well, I guess the main reason is if you retain ownership of the property, then you retain the responsibility for any maintenance that's associated with the property. If at some point in time, there's some catastrophe that damages the rail, it's the county's responsibility to repair that rail line.
Is this, is this little section, is it part of the property that was purchased back in 2007, 2008?
No, sir, not purchased. No, the history of this property is that the railroad originally deeded it to the county at no charge, at no cost, because it was part of a grant package. So now that grant has run its course and we are free to return it back to the railroad and therefore relieve ourselves of the responsibilities for maintenance and upkeep.
Is there an alternative entrance, rail entrance into the back of the property there that the county owns as part of the industrial park? Are we gonna be able to act, are our future owners back there gonna be able to access through this rail line?
Well, there's some, it's unlikely that any of the other property that would be north of the Shell Building can be rail-served anyway because of the topography. If you look in the upper kind of left-hand corner of that photograph, that's the 25-acre piece that the county currently owns. It can be rail-served theoretically, although it's going to be a kind of a tough site to get rail service to as well.
But what about the property that's back behind, this west of Paragon Films? I'm like, I'm sorry, east of Paragon Films, looking at this photo?
You would be talking about the property that's behind Craftmaster Furniture. That property is owned by the Economic Development Corporation. So theoretically, it too can be served, but it would be farther to the east of where this photograph is, off of the main line. And again, that one's gonna be a tough site. It's theoretically possible. It would take some cooperation with Craftmaster Furniture to cross some of their property in order to get rail back there, which, I mean, I think that would certainly be doable, but it's, it could be somewhat challenging as well. But transferring this back to the railroad will not impact that down the road.
That's what I wanna make sure of.
Yep.
I wanna make sure that we've got entrances where we need them.
We do, and of course, it's, I mean, it's to the railroad's benefit. If we can get a rail customer and find a way to get rail in there, they will help us get rail to them. Absolutely.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
One question, this is, and this is, may just be in general, but, you know, I'm looking at this little strip of property and it's, I mean, and as it sits right now with a rail, railroad track, you know, it's basically just, you know, as my granddad would call it, it's just a piece of dirt that holds the world together.
Right.
Except there's a railroad that runs all the way across it. I mean, this is just a, if there is a rail, rail line across that property, and not that I would, you know, not that I would want to do this, but, or I'm not inferring anything. I mean, aren't there rail laws that, you know, I mean, the railroad's a pretty powerful, pretty powerful industry. And this is just me asking a question. Could we stop them from using? I mean, and like I say, is there something Alexander County could say, hey, we don't want you going across our property anymore? And they'd have to stop? Or is there, you know, or is it because there's a rail line there now, there's nothing, you know?
I'm sure they have an easement to use that rail line.
Yeah, I think they're built in easements for the railroad, all the way down the railroad tracks. Unless I'm mistaken on title searchers.
Which, you know, and I mean, and I understand, I mean, I understand the owners, I understand the negativity of owning a piece of property, especially if it's underneath a railroad track and it can't be turned into anything else anyway. What's the point of owning, you know, what's the point of owning that property? But I just, you know, I don't know. It just sort of confuses me as to why, why that's like that, why that's like that to start with.
The reason that you own this piece of property is strictly because of grant requirements at the time that Paragon Films came into the industrial park, the state of North Carolina, and other grant agencies cannot give funds directly to a private industry. And so the only way that rail line could be put in there using grant funds was for Alexander County to own the property.
Okay.
And so the property that you own is literally just to the extent of the width of the rail. Nothing outside the rail lines at all.
And the railroad owned it originally anyway and gave it to us, so we should be giving it back.
Well, yeah, and like I say, I wasn't trying to, you know, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to pull one over on, I mean, on the railroad by any means. I mean, they're a great business partner with the county. You know, I just, I just, you know, I've heard that, you know, laws and things, as I think goes with railroads, you know, they sort of can do what they please anyway, almost. But, and like I say, I didn't have, you know, didn't have any background as to why that started.
I will move to approve the transfer. Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, we are in a public hearing. I know.
Yes.
It's a public hearing. Does anyone in the audience want to speak? Sorry. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna say one thing.
Back whenever we did this thing with Paragon Films, we had to do a lot of things and jump through some hoops in order to get the grants and everything that we needed to be able to get Paragon Films to come and working with the different people, the Department of Commerce and some other folks in order to get that rail line ran, because the biggest thing that Paragon Films wanted was they just wanted access to the rail so that we'd be sure to get those tankers in there with those plastic pellets so they come out to plastic. And at that time, we pretty much agreed that once they got the rail built, we got the, everything done and all, all the stipulations were met and the contracts as pertaining to the grants were met, we would give this land back to the railroad. Now, that's pretty much the way we had done those things back then and it's worked out real, real well. And Paragon Films already expanded one time and when you go down, when you go down 90, if you look, there's an awful lot of tankers sat there and they're just waiting on one thing, that's to unload and go down to Paragon Film. So I just wanted to throw that in so the people know, because back then, at that time, I was involved in some of that, so.
Well, and they, Alexander Railroad, Alexander Railroad is a great business partner, as Commissioner Lael said, and I don't want anybody from there thinking anything because we're asking questions, but, you know, we weren't involved in that with Commissioner Yoder at the time, so it's important that we understand it before we do something. Okay, I will make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? There being none? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant recommendations of the Alexander County Economic Development Corporation and we give this land back to the railroad as we had, as it needs to be.
Second.
Got a motion to second. Any more discussion? There being none? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. We'll move on to item four on the agenda, update on the Alexander Railroad Shell Building. Call on David Eisenhower, the EDC director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, since I was going to be here for the public hearing, I thought it would be a good opportunity for me to give you a very quick update on the status of the Alexander Railroad Shell Building located in the Alexander Industrial Park. We've had some new aerial photography completed recently, thanks to Team Hager and they've done a really good job with photography at the park. And this one just shows you an overall view of the park, of course, looking left to right, Shell Building on the left and then Paragon, as we had been talking about, Liberty Reload, and then Craftmaster Furniture's new renovated facility there at the top page. Next photograph just shows an updated photograph of the Shell Building. That would be looking west and if and when, or when, I won't say if, when we get a prospect in this building, the rail spur would run on this side of the building. Again, it's 50,000 square foot building, expandable to 125,000 square feet. If you look at the next photograph, just a nice photo of the front of the building. And again, we've talked about the railroad being a good partner. Certainly appreciate the effort that the railroad has put into this building, investing in excess of a million and a half dollars to allow us to have this Shell Building to market. And next photograph just illustrates the space available for this building. As I said, it's 50,000 square feet, but the expansion area will more than double the building to 125,000 square feet and hopefully will fill up that entire space. Again, next photograph, just a photograph...
Again, next photograph, just a photograph looking east, showing the building, and again with Paragon there in the background of that building. Next photograph, just a very nice scenic view of the building, which we're using in some of our marketing materials. Last slide that I have for you just is an update on the certification process. And I had talked to you in the past about this program. This program is now completed, so this is now a certified building. And what that means is that all those things there on the right side, the executive summary, building overview, the condition assessment, title search and market information, have been completed by Creative Economic Development Consulting and their team of engineers and experts. And this report is extremely in-depth. It's a two-hundred-and-twenty-five-page report that was compiled, and the purpose of that is simply to give a prospect the confidence that this building is what we claim it is, that it's been thoroughly examined, that it meets specifications. We've, we've had environmental tests done. So it's really just a comfort for the future buyers in knowing what they're getting. And again, I apologize for the big red first N. I had a little technical difficulty, but what that's supposed to say is first in North Carolina. So this is the first certified building in North Carolina. Very proud of that. And we're still in the final process with the Department of Commerce to have it recognized as such on the Department of Commerce's webpage. And I just, I think that's going to be a very helpful thing in marketing this building. We've had one prospect company on the ground to visit the building already. Spent about half a day with them. Unfortunately, they decided to go somewhere else, but that's all part of the game. You have to swing at a lot of pitches before you get a hit. So we've already at least had some folks visiting the county from outside the state. We've had interest in the property. I've sent lots of flyers out. I will say that the railroad has contracted with Stump Corporation from a realty standpoint to market the building for them. And we're just, we're just excited about the prospect this building holds. So that's all I wanted to report, Mr. Chairman. But if anybody does have any comments or questions, I'd be glad to try to answer your questions.
David, they are marketing that to lease or sale, correct? Or is it one or the other?
It's primarily for sale. A lease has not been ruled out, but a lease gets a little more challenging in that if somebody wanting to lease the building is probably gonna want the building finished out, and so it becomes a question of who pays for that outfit of the building. But a lease is possible, but that's not really where the railroad is.
Railroad doesn't really wanna be a lessor, I guess.
Correct. Correct. Now, there are some, some, some forms of financing out there that could pay for the upgrade of a building and then result in a lease, a lease situation for a prospect that we've talked to some people that can, can help that happen if a company does not want to buy the building. So in essence, another organization will buy the building from the railroad, outfit and lease it.
So, Mr. Eisenhower, pretty much the building is ready for sale or lease.
Building is completed, yes, sir.
There's nothing else that we would really have to do to make it for market, ready? All right, thank you.
The Certified Industrial Building Program is kind of like getting a, I guess, a home inspection. When you're getting ready to sell your home, get a home inspection beforehand. That way you can give to prospective buyers as they come and look at the home, so.
That's kind of the way that translates.
Mr. Chairman, if I can make one comment. And I know we, the board, we all got an email today that I think, I think County Manager French sent to us from the Western People and Council of Government, and it's actually an article in USA Today that mentions Hickory. Well, you know, we're Alexander County, but we are a part of the Hickory Metro. When people think of, you know, when they think of, I guess you say, you know, areas in North Carolina, you know, you have Charlotte, and that includes a lot of other stuff like Mooresville and, you know, and all that, and Concord and all that kind of stuff. Well, when they say Hickory, they're basically looking at our four-county region. And anyway, the USA Today article mentioned Hickory as, and I don't remember the exact title, but it was basically, you know, these towns across the United States that have gone busted because manufacturing, manufacturing left at one point, and now manufacturing is back in, in those areas. And it was talking about Hickory, it talked about Dalton, Georgia, which I know, you know, Dalton, Georgia's famous for carpet manufacturing. But was talking about the low unemployment rates in these areas, including right here, and how the economies are starting, you know, how the manufacturing jobs are coming back. And I don't think it's for lack of trying, because with all the things, and I'm not tooting my horn because I've only been here a year and a half, but with all the stuff that we, you know, that Alexander County EDC and the commission and, you know, obviously in Catawba County, their, you know, their, their efforts and, you know, other places around our region, but with, you know, with the Furniture Academy across the street and, you know, the work of all the local EDCs and the Western, you know, Western People and Council of Government, we're, we're starting to see some of the fruits of that labor, you know, because our manufacturing, our manufacturing jobs are coming back. And that's, you know, that's a good thing to see.
Absolutely. And the big, the big problem with that is now we've got all these manufacturing jobs back and a lot of people have left that industry, so the need for the training center. Anybody else? Okay. All right, we'll move on. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Item five on the agenda is another, another public hearing, so remind me. Approval of road names. And calling Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We haven't done this in a while, but staff requests the approval of the following road names as listed below. The names meet all the, our regulations as required. The names have been checked for duplication, sound indexing, et cetera. Road name Deer Valley Drive, it's off Blankenship Road, and Jolly Lane, which is off Little River Church Road. And we recommend those be approved, but this is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone in the audience like to speak about the road names?
Do any of the Jollies that live on Jolly Lane not want it named after themselves?
Pretty of a deer.
Yeah, or any of...
I have one question. What is the sound indexing? I understand duplication.
It sounds like another...
Okay, I got you. Okay, I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. I will also make a motion that we approve the following road names, Deer Valley Drive off Blankenship Road, and Jolly Lane off Little River Church Road.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. We will move on to item number six, broadband committee update. And I will call on myself. And... Jamie, when is, do we have a date scheduled for our first meeting on that?
There's no date.
No date, but it's gonna be September.
That's when we'll appoint the committee.
Okay. So we're gonna appoint this committee on September the 12th. And so this is kind of the last call. If you have any experience in broadband, if you're listening, any experience in, in knowledge about fiber optic cable, we invite you to be on this committee. The first meeting will be sometime probably in late September. And what, what the goals of this committee are going to be is to develop a plan to deploy fiber optic cable coverage to homes and businesses in Alexander County. We're going to apply for a grant tonight to complete a countywide broadband study. And another part of this committee will be to work with representatives of the, I believe it's the North Carolina Broadband Office, is that the actual name of it? And to also use the recently released North Carolina State Broadband Plan as a guiding document and to work with private companies to bring in the necessary private investment to deploy fiber optic broadband in Alexander County. And why is this important? Well, there's a lot of businesses in Alexander County that don't have the connectivity that they need. There's a lot of people who work from home that don't have the connectivity they need. Students don't have the kind of internet access that they need to be able to do their homework. As, as we become more and more reliant on faster computers and more computing power, we have to be able to transfer more and more data across the internet. And a lot of it's going wireless, but the backbone of the wireless is fiber optic. So you have to have the fiber optic cable in to be able to do that. And there's, the existing providers in Alexander County are not going to put any more resources here. So they're not gonna invest more capital in order to upgrade the system or to put more lines in out into the more rural areas. It's not gonna happen. So we're gonna have to go out and we're gonna have to find these smaller companies that may be able to fit into these niche places to do this. And that's what part of this broadband committee's for. So, you know, if, if we don't have, if we don't have the access to broadband that people need here and that companies need and that, you know, I mean, if you're the CEO of a major company, you're gonna be going home and you're probably gonna be checking email and you're gonna need to know what's happening. You might have to have a, you know, file sent to you at home to sign off on and looking at engineering plans. So we've gotta have a better backbone in this county in order to make progress as far as economic development goes, so that's what this is about. And we invite, you know, anyone with experience and knowledge about this to be, be a part of it. If you would, just call the county clerk and she'll sign you up. So that's all I wanted to do on it. Anybody else have any comments on it? Item number seven, legislative goals discussion. I guess I've got that one, too. Is, when is, when is the last day to present goals to the...
September the 23rd?
Yeah. September the 23rd? So we can actually hold off until then to put the goals together and get the... I've got a couple that I would like to bring, bring up at our next meeting that have to do with DOT, so. And some of those things, so I'm not ready to, I actually haven't had time to put that in a form that's presentable to the North Carolina Association County Commissioners, but if we can hold off on that, we'll put that on the next agenda. And if anybody else has anything they would like to be, see pursued at the General Assembly, then that's, now's the time to do it.
And then they make this presentation, then to the association, then the association brings them all into committee, and the committee decides which ones that support the entire state, and then they make those into recommendations. And just because we submit a recommendation doesn't necessarily that that's gonna be one the association puts through to fight in the, in the legislature.
But it will be considered.
It will be considered, yes. All of them are considered by the committee.
All right, we'll move on to item number eight, special announcement regarding the purchase of Community One Bank property. And I've got that one, too. So on August 10th, 2016, Alexander County will finalize the purchase of the Community One Bank Building in downtown Taylorsville. The proposed plan is for this facility to house the following departments: Tax Office, Registered Deeds, North Carolina License Plate Agency, Inspections, Environmental Health, Zoning, Planning and Engineering. The property was purchased for three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, and a current timeline on this proposed renovation plan is under review and will be announced at a later date. I believe the tax value on this was five-hundred-and-fifty thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand?
That's correct.
Something like that, I'm going by memory. And I think the last purchase price was about ten or twelve years ago for 1.2 million. Am I correct on that?
Well, the current asking price was six, six-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Right, but the last time it was purchased, I believe it sold for...
Million forty-two.
Went million forty-two, okay, it was over a million. So we did get a good deal on this, and we were all very happy. And, but trying to get five people to come to an agreement on a price is sometimes difficult, so it ended up being a very, very low price that we came to an agreement on.
We did for a little bit.
And so we got a good deal on it. And, you know, the reason that we've decided to move some of these departments there is we promised that we would move out of Old Wittenburg School so that the school board could sell that property and raise money to hopefully, you know, keep Taylorsville Elementary School open. So that's, that's the reason we did that. And it'll be a, it'll be a good thing. It's gonna be a central location. I know that, you know, it's sometimes easier for, you know, us who are in Bethlehem to drive to the building inspections department there on 16, but that's okay. It's just gonna be five, six more miles, so that's all right. It'd be a better location, much better building, so. And you're gonna have a lot of, a lot of those departments that need to be together, that need to work together, they're gonna be there with each other.
Well, I think that was the primary. There are two reasons. Number one, I felt like when we discussed it, we could buy it at a very competitive price 'cause Community One's been purchased by Capital Bank. They're kind of in the middle of that transaction. So typically, that's an opportune time to, especially if a bank branch is closed, there's very little value you can drive from it unless it's in a major metropolitan area on a main road, which they just tear down the building and go, which is not the case in downtown Taylorsville. By consolidating, I mean, obviously, we've got some departments at lease space, so we can move away from leases. Now, of course, we're buying it for 350. We're gonna have to probably spend a like amount. And we don't have the final numbers, we're gonna have to invest because the, those of you who are familiar with that billion, the building on the right-hand side is where the bank was, drive-through. The left is in essence unfinished. Matter of fact, I think some of that floor is still dirt from what I recall. But really, that's probably better than having to tear something out. It's more of a blank template to start with. It will offer people excellent parking opportunities for the License Plate Agency. I would hope that if possible, we might be able to cross-train departments and people. So at some point, you may have some efficiencies there. So, you know, at the end of the day, I think it makes a lot of sense. It's more, it's closer to our county manager, which anything that's closer is easier to manage. I think getting the building inspections in the county seat in Taylorsville is a good move. I'm a resident of town in Taylorsville, and it's one less empty building in the town of Taylorsville that's being repurposed. I can't see anything bad about that. And to be honest with you, who knows how, I think that building could have sat there for many, many years 'cause people are not speculating on real estate, commercial real estate in Taylorsville. And thus why I think they finally accepted our offer. When we made our offer, they came back with a counter. We stayed firm where we were, and, you know, we did have, I thought, decent pricing discipline in buying this building. So I think it will ultimately be a, a very solid move for the county.
Yeah, I agree with you. The biggest thing is getting all the, all the, as many people as we can in one facility where you can do one-stop shopping and getting these folks out of these rental buildings. The more we get them out of rentals and we get them into our own facilities, that's gonna save the county money over the long run. And I think after all this is done, I think that probably we'll only have two facilities that will be renting. That will be the early release program. And my favorite probation and parole, nothing against the people that worked there, but the fact that State of North Carolina gives us one dollar per year for the rent. And we have to pick up the tab on that. So that's money that we have to spend. That's a mandated tax for the citizens of Alexander County, comes via the state of North Carolina, better known as Raleigh. So I think this will really help get everything in one location and unify one-stop shopping for the citizens that need those facilities.
All right, we'll move on to item number nine on the agenda. Rocky Face Park Phase Two bidding and Part F Grant Extension.
Mr. Chairman, the next item, we need to do a couple of things tonight. One is we need to reject the one bidder that we had. We had one bidder when we opened bids for Rocky Face Park Phase Two of $980,000, and we need to reject that bid and rebid the project. McGill is working on that revision. And then we'll have that review also by our county engineer. And that's the first thing we need to do in regard to Rocky Face Park. The other thing is we just want to make you aware that we've asked, requested from Parks and Recreation Trust Fund part of a year grant extension for that project, which would extend the grant through September of 2017. But we need to officially reject the low bidder... I mean, the one bidder that we had that was a high bidder. We currently have less than $600,000 in the grant, so it was almost double what we had.
I will make a motion that we reject the grant... I'm sorry, not the grant. The bid that we had on the Phase Two project.
I'll second it.
Is that all you need?
Yes.
Okay. During discussion?
I'm guessing by what they bid on, we were wanting a lot more done than conceivably could be done at this point in time. I'm just double the bid.
Yes, sir.
So are we planning, I mean...
We're going to reduce it quite a bit.
Wind it back?
Yes, sir.
Is it... This is... Why would we only have... I mean, this is just a crazy question, but why would we have only had... Why would we have only had one bidder being Wilk construction on a...
There was actually a second bidder that was interested in the project when we looked at it the first time, but they did not submit a bid. So I don't know what the answer to that is.
It's pretty easy to find out how much money has been allocated to a project like that. And if you look at it and you say, hey, it's going to be double what they've got allocated, then they probably don't want to waste your time.
Well, and I know, too... I mean, I know... I don't... I know several large commercial construction companies or, you know, or people that run them. And a lot of them have plenty of work. They have plenty of work.
Compared to three years ago.
Oh, compared to three... Compared to five years ago. Yeah, oh, yeah.
Plus, the location is... The construction is on rock. It's rock. You don't have to go dig very far to get into rock, so... But there's going to be a number of reductions so that we can still keep the spirit of the project, and so...
Mr. French, how long does the bid open for something like that?
How long is the bid open?
Yeah.
Well, the... By closing the... Re rejecting the bid, then we'll have to rebid it. Once that process starts, you know, we'll open bids and set... Actually, the timeline's in here.
September 1st?
We will... The bid due date, we're anticipating to be September 1st, 2016, and awarding the bids in October. Construction starting in November. That's just the anticipated timeline.
So ample time for somebody to look and if they're interested.
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay.
Ms. Quesa is a bonded contractor, correct?
It does, yes, sir.
From RFP?
Yes, sir.
That narrows the field some.
Any more questions? Okay, we'll move on to item number 10 on the agenda, approval of ARC grant application for Alexander County Industrial Park Pump Station. Calling Rick French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to call to your attention and ask for your approval for the North Carolina Appalachian Regional Commission's grant application. We were invited to apply, as you are well aware. The total cost for building a pump station in the industrial park, in the Alexander County Industrial Park, this is a replacement project, is anticipated to be $560,000, and the amount we're requesting is 50% of that. So we need a motion to move forward with that.
And this is not a want-to, this is a...
This is a have-to.
We have to.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the ARC grant for the Alexander County Industrial Park Pump Station. Application.
Got a motion or a second?
Second.
During discussion? Okay, there being none, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you, Chairman. We'll go on to... Oh, did we not?
No.
I thought we did.
I just got a sec.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. My mistake. I guess we have to go back and do that. Okay. We got a... We skipped the actual voting part on rejecting the grant because somebody started talking and I forgot. So anyway, we... We got a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion about the Part F rejecting the bid on the Rocky Face Phase Two?
We're just rejecting the bid, not the grant.
Right, yes.
Just clarify.
Okay, no more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand? Okay, motion carries unanimously. All right, sorry about that. Item number 11 on the agenda, approval of ARC grant application for Alexander County Broadband Study. Calling Rick French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have another ARC grant application. And it's for the, as mentioned earlier, the Alexander County Broadband Study. Total amount of the project is $20,000. Ten... We're applying for half that, $10,000. And we'd recommend that you move forward with this and approve the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the application for the ARC grant dealing with the... What's called fiber optic? The broadband study.
Second.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Item number 12 on the agenda is Board Appointments and Reappointments. Calling Rick French, county manager.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Senior Center Advisory Committee appoint Betty Morrison for three years, Pat Wilkinson, three years, Rosa Daniels, three years, Joe Velasis for three years, Gary Utz, and reappoint Geraldine Perry and Pauline Huffman for three years. On the Library Board of Trustees, appoint Mike Harrison, and he's filling an unexpired term that expires in 2018, January 2018.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to item number 13, Budget Ordinance Amendments, number one, two, and three. Calling Rick French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Amendment number one is to increase the Economic Development Department budget for the second annual payment to assist the town of Taylorsville with its debt service for the Millersville Area Sewer Project. The debt repayment schedule was not known to the county until after the 2016-2017 budget had been adopted. Payments to the town will be made in May or June of 2017 and to adjust the JCPC budget to match the 2016-2017 funding approved by the North Carolina Department of Public Safety. Budget Amendment number two is to increase DSS expense budget for positions that were accidentally omitted from the 2017 budget worksheets. The positions should have been budgeted, have been included in the original budget, and to decrease DSS revenue budget because the estimated revenue amount was based on receiving state aid to offset county expenses at a higher amount than was adopted in the budget. Revenue estimate should have been decreased prior to the adoption of the budget to correspond to the expense estimate. And number three is what was mentioned earlier, to budget for the purchase of the Community One Bank Building in downtown to be used for county offices. And I'll be glad to answer your questions. I'm sure you'll have some.
Well, I know number two is a... That's a pretty big miss.
It's a big...
And I know it can happen, but I'd just like to see if we can... Each department build in some type of failsafe to not miss. I don't know, how many employees?
Three.
Three employees. And I know it's not easy when you've got multiple employees, but still, yet, if get something like this, because it's really...
In DSS, there are 73 employees.
Yeah.
And they were just... Really just missed three vacant positions at the time. That's what happened.
So it was the three vacant positions?
Yes.
Okay, well... And I understand they were in transition to a new director at the time, but, you know, this cannot happen again.
That's a lot of money.
My only comment is if I'm running... If I'm manager or owner of a business and I forget that I need three employees that I just happened to, you know, to need, and oh, by the way, they're going to cost me $240,000. A, if I'm lucky enough to have that money, it comes out of my pocket as the business owner. B, I tell everybody else that works there, oops, I messed up, and you're going to pay for it. And you better keep up and make up for these three people because, you know, that's just the way it goes. And I hate, you know, and I hate to be that way, but... No, I don't either because government... And I, you know, government needs to be more like private business. If you make a mistake, tough. You know, if you misfigure something, I'm sorry. If I misfigure something in my job, guess who pays for it? You know? If I screw up at my job, it may mean my family doesn't get to go on vacation this summer because I have to spend the money to fix what I screwed up. But somehow, in... Somehow in government, it's okay. Oops, we messed up, won't happen again. And that's my... And I know it's my soapbox, but...
Well, I want to say... I want to say one thing before everybody out there has a heart attack. You said there's three employees, $240,000. That's not right. That's the wrong number you were looking at.
Okay, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, so it's up here at this top section.
About 110.
Yeah, 116.
123,000. $200 is revenue.
I'm sorry, let me correct that. I... $126,000, which to me is still a pretty good chunk of money.
Pretty good days of work.
Well, I didn't want everyone to think that three employees are going to cost the county $240,000 because you've got your salaries and wages, you've got insurance, workers' comp, general liability, retirement, you know...
Longevity.
All that stuff.
Okay.
Taxes, social security. So it's a total package.
Well, Josh, your point in private business, if you miss like that and you have to make up the revenue to offset.
Right.
That's the difference. You may be able to pay for it, but you've got to figure out another way to get there with the revenue stream.
And also in private business, if I'm not the boss and I miss something like that, I get to try to find a new boss the next day because my current boss is not going to let me come back.
Yeah, you'd be looking for a job.
But that's just another...
I've got a question about the revenue. What happened there as far as the missing the revenue?
It's based on the expenses. It's a certain percentage of each position is paid for with state and local dollars, and that's how it's done. So that was just missed. So the revenue wasn't adjusted either.
So by leaving out those three, that increased.
Revenue is estimated on the full, like when the budget's done in DSS.
Wait.
If they ask for...
There's my $240,000 number, folks. Sorry about that. Between missing employees and adding... Excuse me, overstating how much revenue would be, it is a total goof of $240,000.
What part of the state and federal government's going to make this up, Rick? On these three positions? And they're... You know, on the formulas they use because some of this is paid through the state and the federal?
That's correct.
I mean, so how much are they going to be able to recoup that money from the state and the federal for this because of the mess up?
Some from the state, but it's on, you know, for all the DSS positions, some are funded at different amounts to the county for certain positions. And what happened here was, you know, with 73 people, there's a certain amount of revenue that's generated both from the county to match that and also from the state, the other grant sources.
Right.
So this is how much the miss was or the oops or whatever Josh called it. And honestly, I don't know that we've had something like this happen.
I don't ever recall this happening since I've been here.
Yeah, I've been here.
I mean, this is... Well, I guess my question is, are any of this revenue... Well, number one, it looks like the state and the federal government's not going to be able to put any revenue except for a small portion that will come from the state. Is that correct?
This is based on the formula that we use for everything, Larry. This is not... This is not... They're holding any money on us or anything. This is just our portion of it.
Okay. Are these three... Are these positions that we're talking about, are these positions that the state and the federal government could penalize the county because they're not there?
That... Yes, that's correct.
They can penalize us?
Yes. But they're not going to penalize us, so, I mean, don't... The positions... Some of the positions have been filled, so there's a lot of turnover in DSS now anyway, so...
Right.
That's my question. Okay, say if we don't get there on this budget amendment, we're three less people. Is that something the department can manage through?
I don't believe so.
That's my question, Mr. Campbell, is whenever we were talking about this, is the fact that some of this stuff, if you do not do it, then the state will come in and penalize you and hold funding for certain things. And then also, there's a fine that goes against the counties because they don't uphold their part of the bargain on some of these positions.
With NCFAST, it's changed drastically the work of DSS. And the positions that we're talking about are... I know it seems like a lot of positions, but in the scheme of things, you know, those are positions that they need to fulfill the goals that the state sets for us. If we don't meet those guidelines, we can be penalized financially.
But to flip side, and I know they work hard, but if other people pick up that portion that these three would do, are you saying that's not an option?
I don't think that's going... That would happen, not with all the turnover that we have. We lose three to four people a week.
All their employees.
Yeah. Sorry, but I mean, that's... We haven't, I mean, this...
Three to four people a week?
Yes, sir. It happens quite frequently.
So that'd be your whole department with turnover in a year.
Well, we have a lot of turnover.
Would the penalty be more than $116,000?
It... Commissioner Reese, it just depends. I mean, it wouldn't be... Wouldn't have an opportunity to get that bad because it would be addressed.
They're going to make you address it.
Yeah, they're going to make you address it early on.
Sort of like probation and parole.
You know, I guess what comes bad is it's like a penny on the tax rate, isn't it? $240, $260? Give or take.
But the thing is, I know it's DSS, and everybody thinks that the Alexander County Commissioners and the county manager have total control over the Department of Social Services, but that is far from the truth. A lot of those positions are paid for, you know, 75% from the state or 50% from the state, you know, whatever that may be. Are any of them 100% from the state, state of North Carolina? Probably not, but there are 75% positions. The state will tell you what to do and how you're going to do it. And if you don't cooperate, they will make you cooperate. So I'm just telling you the way it is. If this money would have been in the original budget, you know, the budget would have been $240,000 higher. It's not like we're adding three more positions. They were there. It's just the funds were overlooked.
One question on number one. We'll get off of that one for a minute. The... Is that the only payment we'll be making on the sewer? Is just the one payment to the town?
For next year, yes, sir.
For next year?
I mean, for this fiscal year, yes, sir. It's... You know, there's 20 payments to make.
Okay, so we're going to be paying for a pretty good while.
Yes, sir.
Are all of them be the same?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Where, this is me for information. Where does the Millersville Sewer Project go?
It follows 16 from town into, you know, goes down 16 south, and it ends approximately where...
Red light.
Yeah. Where the, where our, where we're stationed right now at Witburg.
Okay.
Goes there.
So it's basically Highway 16?
Yes, sir.
Has it been successful with additional taps or users or...
He's, he's getting some taps on it. We get a portion of those taps. It's similar to the agreement, similar to the agreement that we have with Energy United. We don't no longer have it, but we did have it.
Mr. Chairman, based on the discussions we were having here, I'm making a motion that we vote on each individual budget ordinance instead of voting on ones as a group. Vote them as individual ordinances.
Okay. Is there a motion for ordinance, budget ordinance amendment number one?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Excuse me, sir. I made that a motion that we'd do that, and we didn't get a second. So therefore...
Okay, second.
Okay, I apologize, sir.
Yeah, I'll second Larry's motion, do them individually.
Okay. Is there any more discussion about, all those in favor of voting on each individual amendment, raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, can I point one thing out about budget amendment number two, just so your board's aware?
Yes, sir.
There are people in those three positions. So if that does not approve, is not approved, those three people will lose their jobs.
Yeah, I will make a motion that we approve budget ordinance amendment number one. Second. Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There be none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. And I will make a motion that we approve budget ordinance amendment number three.
And I'll second that.
Okay, you got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There be none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously.
You know, we got to discuss this thing, but, you know, and, 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 Mr. Chairman, this being a, being a, even though this blunder's been made, okay? There has to be discussion in closed session, sir. We can't discuss, no, I'm talking, well, I'm not talking about this part.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I understand the mistake was made.
You have to talk about publicly.
Well, sir, I, I was going to discuss personnel matters, sir.
But it's not, it's not a personnel. I mean, it's just a salary is what you're talking about here. You're talking about a number.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we table budget ordinance amendment number two until our September meeting.
Can that be done without firing the people?
We'll make it work, but we'll...
Does it have a budget variance for, until that point in time?
I mean, I have to spend money.
Well, what have we done up until now? I mean, I don't mean that, but, you know...
I understand.
We've, these people are working right now when the budget changed July 1st.
We'll make it work to the 18th.
I'll second Josh's motion.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? There be none, all those in favor of tabling budget ordinance amendment number two signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Okay, we'll move on to item number 14. Other business county managers report. Calling Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things to mention. One is that Commissioner Yoder and I will be attending the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference in Winston-Salem, August 11th through the 14th. And also, if you'd be looking at your calendars, we need to schedule a work session in September or October. So if you start checking your calendars, and Jamie will check with you and see, but we'll need for a couple of different items. And that's all I have. I have some items for closed sessions.
Mr. French didn't talk about the vertical mile. He didn't say anything, but I, I mean, if y'all noticed, the Rocky Face Park out there, Mr. French has put this in the, in the thing there. This vertical mile thing has really caught on big time in Alexander County, and people are really using the park out there. And they, I think it's what, eight times, Rick, or nine times, you go around, you get a T-shirt. And then you up the ante here just recently, if you do something else.
If you, if the vertical mile consists of eight trips, there's eight loops, you do eight, when, at completion, you get a T-shirt. And then that, there's a five-mile shirt for trips around the vertical mile. So that's 40 loops. And then there's a 10, something for 10 miles at currently. And right now, we have, actually, the numbers that we gave you have increased since we posted. It's over 300 now. I think we had 12 or 14 sign up over the weekend. So it really has caught on. And most of those people are from Alexander County.
Right, and, and, those folks have caught on big time, and this, this is going really, really well at Rocky Face Park. And Rick was one of the folks, was one of the ones that started that and got it started and made the competition. And now folks have really, really caught on to it. And it's, it's extremely a good thing. It's happened here locally in our county. You're to be commended for that, Mr. French.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Let's move.
Second.
Motion second. Is there any discussion? All those signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Did you vote yes?
I did.
Okay. We need to have a closed session per North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A, 145 and 6. To prevent the disclosure of confidential information, economic development, contractual and personnel, we will reconvene after the closed session solely for adjournment. And I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. We are in closed session. Thank you.